Yeah, it hasn't changed.
It was a nice, you can make a nice round.
It stays a good tune considering it hasn't been tuned in more than two years.
And even cottonwood, cottonwood's pretty easy.
Well, nevermind.
I still go like, get the C on there.
So that's tough.
In my guitar.
I guess Stewart knows too.
Yeah, well, I've got a guitar.
But the others are kind of, I mean.
That's not rad, I use the C.
Just reading front.
It's better than my ear.
Middle.
I figured that wasn't going to be it.
Every time I think I got it.
They're quite, that's why.
This is a great classroom. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to USD 305 Board Meeting. Today is May 8th. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into the agenda, I would like to take a privilege of the President and announce that today is the National Teachers' Day, and we are celebrating Teachers' Week this week. So if you happen to know or see a teacher, even those of you that have children sitting here with you, if you know one of your old teachers and know where they are, give them a card or give them a call. Teachers do astounding things and remarkable work, and today is some of the, we will see as students walk across here for the Superintendent's Excellence Awards that teachers have really helped these students along. And it takes three groups, and one of those core groups is, are the teachers. So thank you, teachers. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Madam President, there is an addendum for personnel that's at your place. We also need to add an executive session, letter C for negotiations. And for our Board of Education members, you do have an edited version of the KISA report on your desktop.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Gary?
I move that we approve the agenda with the corrections made by the Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. A second? Jim?
A second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Moving on to recognitions and presentations, first we'll have the Superintendent's Excellence Awards with Jennifer Bradford Vernon.
Thank you, good evening. Our first group of awards tonight goes to forensic students at South High School who qualified for state. Megan Hagaman is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the forensic students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their coach? As I call your names, students, please step toward Dr. Hardy so you can receive your award. And if parents would like to take photos, we'd be glad to pause if you'd stand. After you've received your award, please walk to the end of the line and remain standing until all the students have received their awards. Twenty-three South students participating were Savannah Bonia, sophomore, poetry, duo interpretation, impromptu speaking, and extemporaneous, national qualifier for NCFL and NSDA. Piper Brady, freshman, duet. Maya Daly, freshman. Extemporaneous speaking and informative, national qualifier for NCFL and NSDA. Sydney Diavril, sophomore. Amaya Dungen, sophomore. Albany Garcia, senior. Holly Johnson, sophomore. Gavin Jones, sophomore. Domestic and foreign extemporaneous, national qualifier for NCFL and NSDA. Tristan Kinderneck, sophomore. Madeline Lilac, sophomore. Foreign extemporaneous, oration and impromptu, national qualifier for NCFL and NSDA. Robin Logan, sophomore. Informative in duo interpretation, national qualifier for NSDA. Tiana Marion, freshman. Foreign extemporaneous inoration, national qualifier for NCFL and NSDA. Abby Miller, sophomore. Alyssa Peppers, sophomore. Cameron Post, sophomore. Hannah Ray, sophomore. Daniella Rodman, freshman. Nick Salem, senior. Brandon Stewart, sophomore. Humorous interpretation, informative speaking, and poetry, national qualifier for NCFL. Maddie Turner, freshman. Dramatic interpretation, prose and poetry, national qualifier for NCFL and NSDA. Santiago Vasquez, sophomore. Lauren Zimmerman, sophomore. Would you allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Good job, the work you did. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Our next group of awards goes to forensic students at Central High School. Jubilee Kinney is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the forensic students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Sandy Dow, senior. Jeb Allen, junior. Moses Brown, sophomore. Poetry. Erin Flax, freshman. Joelle Benstil, freshman. Hannah North, freshman. Original oration. Violet Arb, sophomore. Aleah Humphries, junior. Madeline Sears, sophomore. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Good job. Thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next group of awards goes to journalism students at South High School who qualified for the Kansas Scholastic Press Association Competition. Kim Warren is their advisor. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the journalism students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their advisor? Kira Alvarez, junior. Honorable mentions, advertising and yearbook sports writing. Tatum Forrester, junior. Grace Ho, junior. Rebecca Lee, sophomore. Honorable mentions, sports writing and yearbook sports writing. Lauren Robenstein, sophomore. Katie Rivera, sophomore. Marissa Russ, junior. Second place, yearbook copywriting. Third place, editorial writing. Abby Tezka, junior. Honorable mention, infographics. Kaylee Warren, junior. Third place, headline writing and design, and news page design. Honorable mentions, advertising and copy editing. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Good work, Kim. Thanks so much for all of the good work you guys put out. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Our next group of awards goes to journalism students at Central High School who qualified for KSPA. J.D. Garber and Shelby Dinkle are their advisors. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And all the students as well? We would like to first recognize J.D. Garber for winning a Top Journalism Teaching Award. J.D. has been honored as the best high school journalism teacher in Kansas by receiving the 2018 Jackie Engel Award. The staff of The Pylon, Salina Central High School Student Publication, won 10th place in the Best of Show category for news magazines at the November National High School Journalism Convention in Dallas. At that national convention, three student journalists brought home individual awards. Annie Hayes earned Superior in Infographics, Chloe Gillett, Excellence in Editorial Writing, and Cameron Arnold, Honorable Mention in Yearbook Layout. Qualifying and competing at the state competition were Morgan Dalton, senior. Annie Hayes, senior. First place, headline writing. Second place, infographics. Third place, editorial cartoon. Cameron Arnold, junior. First place, yearbook theme. Third place, yearbook layout. Honorable mention, sports photography. Molly Michaelis, sophomore. Chloe Gillett, senior. Madeline Parity, sophomore. Second place, headline writing. Honorable mention, editorial cartoon and editorial writing. Michelle Rizzola, junior. Second place, academic photography. Olivia Johnson, senior. Ellie Cobb, senior. Kayden Cobb, sophomore. Maria Gutierrez, junior. First place, copy editing. Third place, news writing. Bailey Steinle, senior. Isabella Ravino, freshman. Third place, cut line writing and feature writing. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well done, too.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well done. Good job.
Our next group of awards goes to FFA students at Central and South High Schools who qualified for state. Brooke Petty is their coach. Will Brooke Petty and all the FFA students please line up next to Dr. Hardy? Qualifying and competing from Central were Coy Rickley, junior, entomology. Madelyn Smith, sophomore, poultry judging and veterinary science. Madison Crowder, junior, poultry judging and veterinary science. Zachary Garner, sophomore. Qualifying and competing from South were Bailey Berry, junior, and Caitlin Elder, junior, veterinary science. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
You guys always look so sharp. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done.
Thanks for all of the.
Well done. Thank you so much for everything.
Congratulations.
Good job, thank you. Yep.
We now recognize high school seniors who have been named 2018 Kansas Career and Technical Education CTE Scholars. Cindy Roats is the Central High sponsor, and Deb Cohen is the South High sponsor. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all this year's Kansas CTE Scholars please line up next to them? This evening, the scholars will be receiving a Superintendent's Excellence Award certificate as well as their state CTE Scholar PIN. The Kansas CTE Scholar Program recognizes well-rounded, outstanding CTE students who are finishing their senior level, senior year of high school. The scholars from Central were Caitlin Addy. Kinley Breckisen. Zoe Count. Tabitha Dines. Jennifer Guadardo. Peyton Cavanagh. Troy Miller. The scholar from South was Trenton Bresius. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. That's really good work. Congratulations. Good job, sir. Thanks so much for everything.
Thank you so much for everything. Thank you so much.
Our last group of student awards go to high school seniors who earned the Kansas Gold Seal of Biliteracy. Jan Denning is the Central High Coordinator, and Deb Cohen is the South High Coordinator. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the this year's Gold Seal of Biliteracy students please line up as well in the front? The Kansas Seal of Biliteracy recognizes students who possess the abilities to speak, read, write, using grammatically correct words and sentences in at least two languages. Students from Central were Peyton Cox, French. Juan Ravelas, Spanish. Claire Cook, French. Shaden Zapata, Spanish. Jennifer Guadardo, Spanish. Students from South were Johanna De La Torra, Spanish. Louis Fierro Cortez, Spanish. Monica Garcia, Spanish. Anna Ortega, Spanish. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations, you must be very proud of yourselves.
Well done.
Great job.
Congratulations. Well done.
Really good work you've done.
Good job. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. You're just coming around again. That often happens, that's great.
This evening, our last recognitions will be Renaissance Teachers of the Month, January through May 2018. And will the teachers please join Dr. Hardy in the front of the room? Renaissance teachers are recognized through radio announcements and on the citywide self-storage electronic sign. They receive a prize package supported by Y-93.7 KSAL, 24/7 Travel Stores, and Citywide Self-Storage of Salina. January through May, Renaissance Teachers of the Month were: Central High School, Bryce Jones, English teacher; Melinda Jet, English and Reading teacher; Katrina Parity, English teacher; Brooke Petty, Agriculture teacher; From Lakewood Middle School, we have Jennifer K. Higgins, 6th grade Reading teacher; Lexi Fen, 8th grade Science and 6th grade Physical Education teacher; Bev Cleveland, Art teacher; Michelle Griffiths, 6th through 8th grade ESL teacher; From South High School, Jane Bradbury, Earth Space Science and Culinary Essentials teacher; Lindsay Sellers, Director of Performance-Based Diploma Program; Janine Lighton, Algebra I teacher; And from South Middle School, Michael Gaul, Digital Literacy teacher; Tim Bishop, 7th, 8th grade Physical Education Health teacher; Brent Connor, 8th grade Physical Science teacher; Amy Norton, 6th grade Social Studies and Reading teacher; Ginger Armbrust, 7th grade Math teacher. This evening, due to prior commitments, the following were unable to join us: Sue Montoy and Kim Cook from South High School, Billy Joe Bonner from Central High School, and Pedro Ibera from Lakewood Middle School. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Well done.
Thank you so much for everything.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Congratulations. Everything you do. Well done.
You do what you do for kids.
Thank you for everything you do for us. Thank you for what you do for kids. You too, yeah. Thank you.
It's always wonderful to see all of these students come forward. Next on our agenda, and our recognitions and presentations, is Shanna Rector, Sharing Jobs for America graduates.
Madam President, the presentations for JAG should be on your desktop.
Okay, well, I get the great privilege to have joined me our group from Salina Central, Salina South, and Salina West, and they are going to tell us about the Jobs for America's Graduate Program that started in our district in 2013-14, but I'm going to make them come a little closer. And I'm going to have each one of them go ahead and introduce themselves, and then they also have a small presentation, and our students also want to share a little bit about their experience.
Great.
I'm going to turn it over to Kip Kefel.
Like she said, my name is Kip Kefel. I'm the JAG Specialist at Salina Central High School. This is my fifth year and one of the founding members of the program here in the state of Kansas.
Melissa Gates, this is my third year at Salina South High School.
My name is Jacob Andries. I am the Junior/Senior JAG Specialist at Salina West, and this is my fourth month with JAG.
So needless to say, we have a lot of different levels of experience. So, a little bit about Jobs for America's Graduates. Jobs for America's Graduates, Kansas, has been in the state of Kansas since the year of 2013. We're in our fifth year right now, and things have been incredibly successful for our program. The main purpose of our program is to make sure that our students become tomorrow's employees, parents, and leaders. We're helping to shape and mold our students to be the best examples that we want them to be out in their community, wherever they end up, whether they stay here in the state of Kansas, whether they end up in New York, whatever the case may be, our goal is to prepare these students for tomorrow. What JAG is, JAGK partners with school districts throughout the state of Kansas and throughout the country. The purpose of our program is preparing the students for college and career readiness. One of the biggest misconceptions that we face is that JAG is for the bad kids. That's not the case at all. Students who are in the JAG programs are the type of students that we've seen potential in them, or a counselor and administrator has seen potential in them, and they may have not found that themselves. And our goal is to find a way to untap that potential to make sure that they become successful. How JAG is different, it's small group instruction. It's all about building rapport and building those relationships with your students. That's difficult to do if you have a class of 40 or 50 kids. So we tend to focus on having no more than 15 kids per class. Everything is competency-based. We focus on project-based learning, and we've been implementing project-based learning to, the goal being 100% of all of our activities are going to be project-based. The purpose of this is we want our students engaged, not just being compliant in the material. If the kids get a chance to manipulate and mold and shape things, whether that's through community service, whether that's through some type of project, some type of internship, whatever the case may be, it gives the chance, the students, the chance to actually manipulate the material, therefore gaining comprehension. We focus on career exploration and planning, employability skills, student leadership, regional and state career development conferences, which we kind of joke and say that's the JAG State Championship. And this past year, Salina South received 3rd place at that competition, which we are incredibly proud of, the fact that they did so well. And after students graduate, one thing that helps to set JAG apart is we have 12 months of follow-up. So if I have a student who maybe lost a job, I do what I can to help them find and gain employment, and also that acts as proof of concept that what we're doing in the classroom translates to the real world. Currently, we have 62 programs in 29 different school districts across the state of Kansas. The class of 2016 had a 93% graduation rate. The class of 2017 has a 98% graduation rate. 89% of our students have a positive outcome, which means full-time employment, going to school full-time, or military service. 88% are in a full-time employment position. 95% of our students have a full-time placement. And in the year 2017-2018, we're going to have 68 programs in 33 school districts. Here in the city of Salina, in USD 305, we have programs in all three of the high schools, that's Salina Central, Salina South, and we have two programs at Salina West. Currently, Salina Central has 52 students on the current roster. We had 100% graduation rate for the class of 2014, 2016, and 2017. Overall, 99.5% of JAG students at Salina Central High School graduate. Salina South has 38 students on the current roster, 100% graduation rate for the year of 2017, and the class of 2016. Salina West Program A has 33 students and an overall graduation rate of 90%. Salina West Program B has 22 students and an overall graduation rate of 90%. And currently, we serve 145 students within USD 305. And what I'd like to do now is give the chance for the specialists to introduce their students so you can get a firsthand account, because I can sit here and talk about data, but the real impact is when the students say how they feel about the program.
The first student that I have is a senior at Salina South High School. He is our current JAG Career Association President at Salina South, and he was a first-place winner at the Career Development Conference. His name is Xavier Rivas. Did I say that?
Hello. I like to talk about JAG and how it's a great program and has great opportunities. Like, the opportunity that I'm in right now, it's, I have a leadership as a JAG President at Salina South. And then also, with the help of my specialist in the JAG program, it guided me to the career I wanted, to my interest. And I never would have seen myself grad, uh, well, not going to college, but I seen myself graduating. But I didn't see myself going to college, and now I'm going to attend at WSU Tech, and I'd like to give a shout-out and a thanks to them for that. So, thank you.
Next, I have Julia Thornton. She was in my very first JAG class, and she graduated two years ago. She was also a Career Association President.
Thank you, Ms. Gates. As Ms. Gates has just told you, I was the 2015-2016 JAG President for Career Association. Before I was placed in the JAG classes, I was afraid that I wasn't going to graduate. I believed that I was incapable of graduating and then moving on to college and creating a life for my. and creating a life for myself and my future family, that is, I assume will come down the road at some point. By the time I had finished my first semester with Ms. Gates, I already had Bs and As, which was the first time that had happened for me since 2nd grade. The second time of 2nd grade. And then the end of my 2nd semester with Ms. Gates, I had all As. I was still the president and I was learning to not only grow as a person, but to help my community grow and to focus on my future and building the people up around me. I would like to thank Ms. Gates specifically, as well as the JAG program, because I did not feel like my life was important in high school for a while. And now, I just finished my first year of college. I serve as an International Ambassador for the Advocate for Social Cohesion Foundation. And I believe that every single person has worth, and it's thanks to Ms. Melissa Gates and JAG, but I believe that. Thank you.
At Salina West, as Mr. Keffel said, JAG is based on competencies. And so the programs at Salina West are split up to freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors. However, if certain students are already proficient at some of those competencies, if they are freshman or sophomore, they will come to my class where we work on less competencies, but we get more in-depth with them. The next student, Mr. Isaiah Saltkill, is a sophomore at Salina West. And he has been a student that I've been able to rely on heavily. Since I started at the end of January, it's been a hard transition on myself and the students, just because this is a program that I was unaware of. And these students were learning how to deal with yet again another teacher. So Isaiah has been someone that I've been able to rely on to help me to know if I'm doing something right or wrong, usually wrong. And he has really helped the other students transition to accepting me in the classroom.
Hello, my name is Isaiah Saltkill. I, before Mr. A came in, we had Mrs. Goldner. She resigned mid-December, but she officially quit working at my school at the end of December. So, the thing with Mr. A was a lot of people were like, "Oh no, Mrs. G's going." Like, that's our main specialist to go to, because before that they had Mr. Beal. Well, before Mr. Beal, my bad. But with Mr. A, things have been getting easier. He's been showing more light than we could have been able to see. But with Ms. G, she taught us how to explore our jobs and our interests. And for me, my interest was medicals, like a medical degree. And I didn't know where I wanted to be in that medical degree. And then, when I got thrown into Mr. Beal's JAG class, he did this thing called "Job or No Job", which meant like, he showed us videos of jobs we were interested in. And if we were still interested in it when we saw those videos, he'd contact us, give us more information, and possibly even pull people in that work in that department. And when I was doing that, I finally realized that I wanted to go into paramedics or EMT. And the reason why that caught my eye so much was because I like the thought of helping people like at old folks homes and senior centers and stuff like that. But then I thought about the first responders. Like, I thought about all the incidents that happen daily. And I thought, I wanted to be a part of it. So now, my next year I'm going to go into Vo-Tech and pursue that career. And thanks to Mr. A, he has actually been giving me the motivation for it. Because lately I've been going through some hard times, I've been losing people I used to call brothers, really. And he's over here saying like, "You've been doing a good job, like, you want to go work in the garden, let's keep working. I believe in you, I'm proud of you." The only person I've ever remembered telling me they've been proud of me was my father. And actually hearing that from someone else, it means a lot. So with Mr. A, he really digs down into the crevices of each student. And he goes head-on personally with those students. And with JAG that I've realized, when I came to Salina West, it's just here to help, really. Like, you're in there to realize what you want to do when you graduate. You're there to realize what you want to do maybe 25 years after. Like, JAG is a great thing that I wish I could have came across sooner. Thank you.
For our programs, there are a lot of things to be proud of. And I know for myself at Salina Central, what I'm most proud of is that our students this year have received over a half a million dollars in scholarships. And considering the type of students that we're working with and the barriers that they may face, every single one of us faces barriers in our lives, at least at some point. And it's the purpose of JAG to find out what those barriers are and to do what needs to be done in order to make sure they can overcome them and they can be successful. I want to open it up for any questions from the board.
Any questions? Comments? Carol?
How much time during a typical day do these people spend, these young people spend, with their JAG instructors?
Well, based on the schedule, every student is in JAG as an elective. And to be honest, it seems like a lot of the day they spend in our classroom. But, no, it's always during a class, and it counts as an elective credit on their transcript, which helps motivate students as well, because they're receiving something for it, there's that gratification of that. But seeing students all the time, whether it's at school, whether it's out in the community doing community service, whether it's at a JAG event, it's a lot of time. I always joke that I know the students more than I know some of my ex-girlfriends, so...
Oh.
Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, that's to be seen, so...
Any other?
Madam President, if I could point out, one thing I'm really impressed with, because I've visited with them a lot, it's such a great program, you'll notice their graduation rate is very high.
Yes.
It's higher than the state average, easily.
Yes.
And 100% is pretty impressive. We always talk about, you know, where do you go from there? But they keep doing it year after year, so I'm just very proud of these folks.
I just want to comment. I am so thankful that we adopted this program when we did. And we didn't really know for sure how it would turn out, but we've seen the results. And I really commend all of you, students as well as you teachers. Thank you so much for working as hard as you are, and there's a payoff. There's a payoff in the future. Congratulations to all of you. Carol? Very, well I just wanted to know how many students are involved in these programs altogether? How many young people are we dealing with right now?
Currently, on our current roster, it is, I believe, the number I had down was 145. And then also students in follow-up. So like, right now at Salina Central, I have 43 students that I'm trying to track down every single month, which, it makes for an adventure, but... So we're working with quite a few kids, and that's not even including kids that aren't on the caseload. Because there's kids, you build relationships and kids talk, and "Oh, have you talked to so-and-so?" If you're having something going on, and you know, always redirect to the counselors that are with the administrators. But it's just another gateway for students.
Well, thanks so very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to just say, I got to see the program as a principal, and now I get to see it from the district perspective. And being able to bring it into our Salina West and having opportunities across our district and the secondary schools is really a great thing. The state organization supports Salina, and we are very lucky to have them. And we appreciate all that they do for us. But I also just want to say that this program is not successful without the hard-working teachers that have been involved, because they know these students very, very well, and it's relationships that they're going to have for a lifetime. So, thank you.
Well, could they come forward so we could shake their hands, all this work?
You're doing a great job, keep it up. We're so proud of you guys. Thanks so much.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Terrific. Glad to see you're where you are.
Yeah, congratulations. Keep going. It's been good. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is Approval of Consent Agenda items, which include Minutes of the April 24, 2018 Regular Meeting, Personnel Report, Financial Reports, which include April Bills List, April Bonds Bills List, the Bond Budget Summary, Approve Incumbents Listings, which include to Jobs for America's Graduates Kansas in the amount of $26,000 for the 2018-2019 School Year, to the Wydenheimer for the Annual Maintenance Agreement and Renewal for the LEO Financial Accounting and Human Resource System in the amount of $33,716.12 to U.S. Foods in the amount of $2,016,937.45 for the Prime Vendor Contract, to Highland Dairy in the amount of $215,362.50 for dairy products, and to Bimbo Bakeries USA for bread products in the amount of $52,250. Approve Amendment for Purchase of 6th Grade World History Texts from the Approval Hard Copy Texts in the amount of $45,287.99 to Digital Texts in the amount of $46,989.10 for a difference of $1,702.1 Approve Coronado PTO Gift Acceptance for Equipment for the Purchase of Walkie-Talkies in the amount of $5,500. And finally, Approve Kansas Education Systems Accreditation Initial Report. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll take a motion. Ann?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
Do I have a second? Carol, seconds? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that that KISA report is very impressive. It's clear that they've done a ton of work on that. And so I want to compliment all the folks that added to that.
Next on our agenda is Public Forum. And I do have someone that requested to come forward. Good evening. If you could pause a moment, I'm going to read this statement again.
Sure, sounds good.
"As a reminder, public forum is a non-action item on the agenda. The Board appreciates patrons taking time to share with us about their thoughts and concerns. This is not in appropriate time or place for patrons to make comments of a personal nature about any district employee or student. Persons making comments which violate the privacy, rights of district employees and students will be asked to stop speaking or cease their remarks. If a patron or parent has a concern with one or more employees, the Board will refer that person to the appropriate supervisor or to the superintendent for further review." Are you the only one speaking?
Yes, and I'm representing several moms and their middle-school daughters who aren't able to attend due to the track meet and other support activities.
Okay, could you give us your name, please?
Yes, Rachel Hind Constantino.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes.
That sounds good, okay. Well, I'm here today to share more information and clear up any misinformation that you may have been given regarding the retreat titled "The Power of One", which took place on April 18, the First Covenant Church. First, I believe you may have been told that all of the inappropriate comments at the first roundtable discussion for respecting your sexual selves were in response to questions asked by middle-school girls, when in fact, for Group 1, there was only one question for the panelists that was placed within the question box for the middle-school girls. This fact has been confirmed by an adult who was present at the table. Also, comments heard by the middle-school girls were also confirmed by that same adult. In addition, nowhere on the consent form did it mention that a college freshman, a senior in high school, a junior in high school would be panelist at the Respecting Your Sexual Selves Roundtable Discussion to express their opinions about sex to 12- and 13-year-old girls. Parents consented to a leadership seminar that would develop the character of middle-school girls. When two panelists were discussing how to tell your parents you've had sex, one panelist suggested to say it quickly, while the other said to preface it as though it may happen, when in fact it already has. During a conversation with the first group regarding how you know when you're ready to have sex, the main adult facilitator said, "If you're comfortable enough picking your nose in front of your partner, then you're comfortable enough to have sex with that person." A panelist then responded by saying, "I don't know if I would ever pick my nose in front of my partner." And the facilitator said, "It was just a metaphor."
I'm going to interrupt here. You've already relayed this information to us?
No, I actually had, that was additional information to those points. So that's why I wanted to, I had not actually said that at all, because I have my last.
It was in print when you handed it out to us?
Okay. The last comment was actually in addition to that one that was in print. It was an additional comment. So, those comments are done.
I would think that this would be new information?
That was new information, the last part. Okay. Here we go, okay. Regardless of how these comments came about, the fact is they were discussed and confirmed. There was a lack of control by the main facilitator to discern inappropriate comments. What values does this teach? And do these values represent your leadership of the school district? If so, I believe the public deserves to know your stance. School programs should always be reviewed to ensure that materials are appropriate for the maturity level of the student, are relevant to the curriculum, and abide by the school district's policies. It is our hope that schools are taking this investigation seriously by providing parents with details of what happened and what was said by the panelists and facilitators so that parents, should they choose, have conversations with their child. On Tuesday, May 1, I submitted an open records request, which has yet to be fulfilled within the 72 hours required by the state of Kansas, Cora. Moving forward, we also hope that USD 305 and CAPS are transparent in handling this matter and put the interest of students first, rather than protecting any adult who made mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you again for taking your time to visit with the board. We always encourage the value input from the community and USD 305 patrons, and we appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Next on our agenda is Action Agenda. And we have South High Debate Forensics Out-of-State Field Trip with Megan Hageman.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you this evening. We are really excited to be continuing success at Salina South High School in debating forensics programs. We just recently took 2nd place in the state of Kansas in forensics this past weekend, and we have many students qualified to national competition. So I'm going to start by going over the details of the NCFL National Catholic Forensics League Tournament. We will depart May 23 and return May 29 for that competition. We will not miss any school as a result of those competition dates. Students were qualified via a national qualifier throughout the spring semester. We have 12 students that will be qualified to represent Salina South High School at the NCFL National Tournament. It's the largest amount we've taken in many, many years, so we are very proud of that. The trip is going to cost us about $7,500, because it's located in Washington, DC. So DC is a little bit more pricey when it comes to hotels and comes to those costs, especially with our transportation. So students have worked very hard to pay for those national competitions. They've raised more than $14,000 in order to be able to help offset the expenses for this travel. And supervision is going to be covered by three Salina South coaches on our staff. We additionally will have the Hutchinson High School Assistant Coach is going to go with us to help offset judging expenses. And we are going to cover their transportation costs as well. And they are more than willing to help us drive and fill out the district processes if we need extra drivers as well. We will be taking Suburbans and driving to get our transportation there, and then we will be using public transportation while we are in Washington, DC. And we have done all of the cost accounting for that and have that together. This is a direct extension of the activities that we do in our classroom when we're learning argumentation, public speaking, acting, communication skills. And a great opportunity for our kids to not only get to see an amazing city and get to see all of the free and fantastic things you can see when you go to Washington, DC, but also to compete against some of the greatest communicators in the nation and have an opportunity to learn by watching them and continue to grow. The second tournament that we have qualified is the National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament in Fort Lauderdale, Florida this summer. That also will not require students to miss any school. We have 10 Salina South students qualified for that national tournament. They qualified via national qualifiers throughout the spring semester. We are estimating that this cost will be a bit cheaper, even though it's a little bit longer. It's at a more affordable location. We estimate this trip will cost about $5,000. And we have done some research and looked at what some other schools have done to try to help us reduce cost in terms of lodging, and we're excited about that as well. Those students will leave on June 15 and return on June 24. They get the opportunity to participate in a wide variety of speaking and debate competitions. And the great thing about the NSDA National Tournament is that once, if they happen to get eliminated from their main event competition, they get the opportunity to participate in consolation and supplemental events, which Kansas is very good at. And so we tend to have students do very well at that national qualifier. And I would welcome any questions that you might have about that travel. And I would welcome any questions that you might have about that travel or about those two trips.
Any questions? Ann?
Say the numbers again, ten for the second one and how many?
It's five thousand for the trip to Florida.
No, no, I mean the number of students.
Oh, ten students to Florida and twelve to NCFL. And the second one is really impressive because you have to be in the top two most times to qualify at that qualifier. It's very hard to do. And the first qualifier is a little bit easier because you got to be in the top five or six, depending on the year. So really impressive that we got ten qualified for that second tournament.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. I do have some questions about safety and so on, particularly because of the, the length that you are driving in school vans and so on, and want to make sure that we're fully covered for liability. I'm not as worried about the automobile as I am about kids and what would happen if, because we have people, our own staff and maybe some others driving, so at any rate.
Right, they would go through the district approval process.
Yeah, we just want to be sure that, that all of that is really.
Absolutely. And we're staying the night halfway through because we know it is a lengthy drive. And so we've budgeted for that and already made those reservations and researched good locations so that we could take care of that as well.
Well, that's good. And any other questions that I have about transportation, I'll deal with administration on that. So, I, you know, I think it's just wonderful that we have as many kids qualified as we have. It's really satisfying.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. I would entertain a motion for the forensics trip to Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Gary?
Madam President, I move that we approve the South High Debate Forensics Trip to Fort Lauderdale, Florida on June fifteen through June twenty-four, twenty-eighteen, as presented.
Second? Jim? Uh, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Moving on to the next trip to, um, Washington, D.C.
Madam President?
I would entertain a motion?
Yes. Uh, I move that we approve the South High Forensics Trip to Washington, D.C. on May twenty-third through May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, as presented.
Thank you, second?
I'd second.
Jim, second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Have a good time. We want to hear about, all about it when you get back.
Absolutely, and hopefully we'll bring back some more hardware.
Okay, great.
That would be nice.
Thank you.
Uh, next on our agenda is commencement date for twenty-nineteenth. Dr. Hardy?
Madam President, as per our practice, it is time for the Board of Education to set the date for our high school commitments, commencements for, uh, twenty-nineteen. It'll, um, the corresponding date is May nineteenth of twenty-nineteen.
Is there a motion? Jim?
Madam President, I move that we approve the May, the Thursday, well, that's, I'm on the, I'm on the wrong way.
Let her see.
Let her see. There we go. I scrolled down too far. I move that we approve the twenty-nineteen, twenty-nineteenth commencement date of May nineteenth, twenty-nineteen, as presented.
Thank you. Second? Gary, second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Next on our action agenda is Salina Adult Education Center graduation date for twenty-nineteen. Dr. Hardy?
Yes, Madam President. If you look at your notes, you'll see that this is the fifteenth Salina Adult Education Center Annual GED Graduation Ceremony. The corresponding date is May thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, at seven P.M. The Board is ready to approve.
Motion? Ann?
Madam President, I re, I move that we approve the Thursday, May thirtieth, twenty-nineteen GED graduation date, uh, as presented.
Thank you. Second, Gary? Gary, second, I take it?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. All those in, okay, silent second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. We do not have anything this season, this evening in discussion agenda. School Board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Thursday, May tenth, Alternative Program Graduation at Salina West at one P.M. Thursday, May tenth, DCP Graduation, Salina West at four P.M. Sunday, May thirteenth, graduations at both high schools, Central at two o'clock, South High at five o'clock. Thursday, May thirty-first, SAE C Graduation Ceremony at seven P.M. And Gary, I'll start with you on what you've been up to.
I have continued being in our schools and working with faculty and others in the community, including Slina Arts and Humanities and others, to coordinate the three oh five live program. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna ask to have that put on the upcoming dates of importance for the next meeting. At that program, we'll have over a hundred and fifty students who will be singing and working on sound systems, working on marketing. We will have a, a video team entirely of high school students from Central and South. Students will be running the sound system, like I said, stage managers. Every part of that program has students involved. It involves an immense amount of faculty time, student time, and our community is hugely supporting that. So, uh, that's, I've, I've been kind of doing a lot of that lately, and I would urge people to get a ticket and go watch it. It is an amazing show.
Thank you. Ann?
Yes, I attended the Central High Honors Night and the South High Honor Banquet, which always is amazing, all the number of awards that all the students in the senior classes are winning. Uh, I went to the Heartland Policy Council Meeting on the third of May, um, and I can't think of anything to report from that. I'm sure there's thing, there are things I've forgotten. I attended the Partners for Success graduation, the ninth class of Partners for Success on the fourth, and that is always a tear-jerker, where all these people with hard barriers in lives succeed, so that's a great thing. And I attended the retirement reception at Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabe?
Um, I attended the Schilling Lunch today for Teacher Appreciation Week, presented by the ESL Parents, and that was quite a good meal. Um, I had a very full plate, and they encouraged me to go back again, which I declined. Um, attended the retirement reception on Sunday, and thank you, President Elwell, for having Dr. Hardy call me out from the stage for, for being tardy.
You are wel, you are most welcome. Just that you were forgotten.
Um, Partners graduation last week was an awesome event. It was cool seeing how that program changes the lives of the graduates and how almost equally important changing the lives of the graduates' children, um, and the impact those people are having on people in the community was awesome. And then, um, two weeks ago, Metal Arc Friday Fan Fair, got to go see them wrap up projects to lineup and see my first grade teacher, Mrs. Ritter, get dunked in the dunk tank. So that was quite nice as well.
That's great.
It's all good.
Tell her thank you. Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes.
Carol?
Well, I was able to get to the retirement reception as well and Partners for Success. I was just thinking in relation to JAG presentation tonight, Partners for Success, it's wonderful to have programs at both of these levels, but it really would be nice if through a program like JAG, we would never have to have Partners for Success.
Right, yes.
So that from the start, early, 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 we are able to help people get on the right track and have faith in themselves. And I had negotiations training yesterday with Erin Wright as my mentor. It was kind of a good meeting.
Jim?
I, uh, had an afternoon where I read the students at Sunset School. And then this weekend, I attended the Slina Area Tech College graduation at the Stiefel Theater, and it was really neat to see a lot of high school students who were graduating from the tech school, my son being one of them.
Right.
And then getting to talk to several of them, and they've already got jobs lined up. So they'll graduate from high school this Sunday, and Monday, they will be in the workforce. And, and that's, I just think that's great. And then today, I got to have lunch out at Schilling with some kindergarten, spent some time with some kindergarten teachers, talking to them about their experience this year moving to a full-day kindergarten and how that's been for them, and, uh, and just really enjoyed that.
That's great. Thank you. Um, I did attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and airplanes are flying and things are looking good out there. I'm just really pleased with what they had to say about that, and you've noticed construction down Santa Fe, so that's getting started, and we can, can either go down Santa Fe or drive around Santa Fe, whatever you'd like to do. I attended the South High School Theater. Regarding, uh, the lead role, a girl had cystic fibrosis and all what's involved with that. Uh, she, they all did a very good job with that play. Also read at Sunset Library, uh, read the book Tops and Bottoms, and that has to do with vegetables and fruit, whether they grow on top of the ground or underneath the ground. And there are some that grow in the middle, so I'll let you figure out what those are. Attended prayer breakfast at Kansas Wesleyan University, and that's one of my favorite things to attend. I really enjoy, uh, that moment with several people in the community. I too, uh, attended retirement at Lakewood, and we've got a mighty force there retiring, but, uh, I think we'll have Wright, Erin, new teachers come in to fill those spots. And then I also had training with Erin, um, for negotiations, and that was indeed a good meeting. So with that, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, first, I'd like to just compliment our Public Information Department. There's a lot of things that they're doing this time of the year, and the awards, the recognition retirement ceremony on Sunday was very impressive, very well done by them. So that's very much appreciated, as well as all the students that are recognized each month that comes out of their department, and they do a great job, and they make it look easy, but I'm telling you, they put a lot of time into it, so we're appreciative of them. Of course, this time of the year, there's a lot of recognition, academic ceremonies. If you go to the concerts, this is the time of the year they recognize the seniors. Last night, I was at Central, and it's just real exciting to see all the things that are going on. It's really a testament, you know, not to our teachers, the sponsors, all of our organization sponsors and directors. It's also, I was just thinking how Ann was saying that and someone else was talking about, when you go to all these ceremonies and you look up there and you go, wow, those are our students. And as many things as they get recognized for is really a compliment to the district that, the quality of education and the opportunities that we give our students. So, um, I would encourage you to go as many of those as you can. We still have some this week. I think, uh, fifth grades, a lot of the fifth grade ones are on Thursday, so if your calendar's open, you can grab a fifth grade, uh, promotion ceremony. Just for your planning purposes, I wanted to point out that, um, this Sunday for the high school commencement ceremonies, um, as for the Central High one, the Board will gather at one-thirty in the, uh, meeting room behind the stage, so you can be ready for that. And then, of course, at South High, we'll gather at four-thirty in the same area for the South High ceremony. Also like to point out that Deborah has done a fantastic job to honor the board members or any of the board members that have a specific request to honor their student or a student and with their diploma by dividing the graduates' names into certain order, and she spent a lot of time with that, and Deborah won't say anything, but it was like a puzzle, and she put it together. So, uh, the folks that asked if they could honor a student, she made that work. So I just want to really thank Deborah for that. And then the last thing, uh, before I finish up, you might recall at the last board meeting, there were some concerns shared by parents about the, um, Healthy Lifestyles Program for our middle school girls. We said we would do some research and investigate and have a report to the Board by this meeting, and we're prepared to do that. But before I, um, give you the actual report, I did want to take a little bit of time and give you some highlights of it first. And so I'm just going to read little bits and pieces, and then eventually I'll give this for you to read later at your, at your own leisure. Um, just a couple things to highlight. The Healthy Lifestyles Programs originated in two thousand eight from a group of concerned educators and community members about the choices middle school girls were making in regards to interactions with boys and general life choices impacting their lives. The community members, teachers, counselors involved in the program have varied over the years, but the basic premise and design has stayed the same. It is a collaborative effort utilizing well-respected community members with professional knowledge and expertise, physician, dietitian, psychologist, and child advocacy, to lead sessions that focus on body image, respecting sexual selves, the power of friends, and finding direction. The middle school involvement includes identifying students to participate, obtaining parent permission, providing school personnel to accompany the middle school students to the retreat, and conducting three to four brief follow-up sessions at the building. The fundamental goal of the program is to provide a safe place for girls to learn about topics in a format that encourages open dialogue about tough subjects. The emphasis is on correct and matter-of-fact information provided by session leaders in a nonjudgmental environment. The utilization of panelists that are close to the age of the participants is done as a means of creating a better connection with the middle school girls and to pro, provide examples of successful young ladies that were recently in their shoes. A recently, a review of the most current retreat survey results indicated that most of the students that attended marked five out of five. I would like to point out before I get to the last part of this, that USD three oh five has many, many programs. I, I try to start thinking in my mind how many programs we might have, but it might be in the hundreds. And, uh, they're successful at all different levels. They generally function very well year to year. At any time, and I thought about this, at any time, there could be an issue with any of our programs, but most of the time, the concerns are addressed at the building or program level and fixed. But occasionally, something is going to come to the level of our Board of Education, and that is the case with this program. A good program that has been successful for ten years, serving five hundred students. Through the input of the parents, we recognize that there were concerns, and as many of us are parents ourselves, we certainly understand how they might feel. We did our research, taking into consideration, including the information that was shared by the parents with the district staff and the Board of Education. We visited with staff, students, parents, panelists, and the people who run the program. From that effort, we have recommendations to the team and leaders who run the program, and I'm going to go over those with you right now, just real quick. So as a response to the current concern brought forth by the parents, the inquiry into the program, delivery and procedures, and content was made. And I think this part is really important. Participant interviews indicated consensus regarding the topics discussed. What differs is the perception of the content and how it was internalized. It is understandable that when sensitive topics are discussed without the context of preceding questions, responses, clarification of facts, that parents would have questions. Every year, the topics discussed during the retreat lead to real questions that need real responses. When necessary, the adult leaders provide clarification and reinforcement of positive choices in the manner that is customary to the Healthy Lifestyles format. The last thing, I guess I want to point out is that these recommendations are for the folks that run the program, for the team. Um, I really want to thank Director for, Executive Director for Administration and Student Support Services, Shannon Recker, for all her efforts. Um, this has taken a lot of time, a lot of research. She did an awesome job at getting deep into it and finding out what we needed to. So here's the recommendations. After reviewing how the program has functioned for the last ten years, there are specific steps that the school district can make to bolster and support the community collaboration while providing oversight to how it functions in our middle schools. So here's the recommendations for the folks that are operating the program. The first one, the program will continue to be voluntary and require parent guardian permission with the added feature of an informative letter outlining the history and outcomes of the program for parents to review prior to allowing the student to participate. The second recommendation, as part of the permission slip process, parent guardian will be provided a descriptive overview of each session topic and the format of presentation. This will include information about the presenters, credentials, student question portion, and panelist composition. Recommendation number three, after each retreat, a letter will be sent home encouraging parents to follow up with their student to create an opportunity for family dialogue on the topics discussed. Number four, parent guardians will be provided with a point of contact at the middle school who is knowledgeable about the program. And recommendation number five, all school staff involved in the program will participate in an orientation prior to the involvement to understand the expectations and procedures to follow and the role they represent as a school staff member. So, Madam President? So Madam President, we said we would give a report. This is the report that we worked on. I have to, like I said, really compliment all the people that put their time into it. They really spent a lot of effort making sure that they were, gave a little bit of history and answered as many questions as they thought was appropriate. So at this time, I'm going to pass those out to the board, so you will have those. And again, please read them over time, and if you have questions, of course, we would like to follow up on that. And Madam President, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hardy. I think that was, your presentation of that is very thorough. Moving on to our next on the agenda is executive session, which we do need for attorney-client and personnel and also negotiations. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for attorney-client first? How long? Five minutes?
Five minutes, yes.
Okay, five minutes.
We need five minutes to get over there, what?
Yeah, five minutes to get over there.
Can we do 10 minutes to get over, to get over there?
Oh, 10 to get over there? Okay. 10 to get over and five minutes.
Oh, okay.
So we'll start.
It's 6:25.
At 6:00.
Should be.
At 6:20, 10 minutes to get there.
10?
6:20.
6:20.
Okay. Madam President, I move the Board of Education go into executive session at 6:20 for 10 minutes for the purpose of consultation with Board Legal Counsel on matters which are privileged in the attorney-client relationship, which if discussed in an open session would waive that privilege, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:30 in the board conference room.
Thank you. All those in favor? Yes?
I'll second.
Second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, 6-0. We have a 10-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at 6:20, right across the hall, with a report if you'd like to stay.